Coffee with the Candidate is presented by Tuffy Tire and Auto Service on Fields Erdle Road, near Montgomery Road, across from the post office. Tuffy is a Better Business Bureau A-plus rated service shop, locally owned and operated for more than 26 years. Tuffy means friendly and superior service on all types of cars. Their talented technicians provide service on your vehicle at affordable prices, all with a nationwide warranty. Mention this ad and get $20 off your next oil change. Tuffy Tire and Auto Service on Fields Erdle, done right, period. Hello, everybody. Welcome to another episode of Coffee with the Candidate. I'm the publisher of Loveland Local News, Joe Wessels, and we are on the final episode of Coffee with the Candidate. We're calling, I'm calling, since it's just me really, the No Shows Edition. These are, this is a podcast about the folks that never responded. I would take that back. Two didn't respond, one declined to be on the podcast, and we'll talk about why during the show here. But we still feel that it's important that the voters know who and what these candidates are about, so we're here to discuss it. And so it's just not me talking during this time here. I brought with us to the lovely, by the way, Hometown Cafe here in downtown Loveland, which I highly recommend you check out. Great coffee, great food. We're up here on the second floor, which is nice and quiet and a little echoey, but that's okay. It's not, this is not designed to be a podcast or otherwise studio. But with me today is Ryan Kulik. He is a Loveland resident. He is a regional national political consultant?
Yeah, I've, I've, thanks, Joe. Yes, I mostly focus on local candidates, but the majority of my clients are outside of this region. I do want to clear something-
Local candidates anywhere, not just local to Cincinnati, but local area.
I do, having, having said that, I do want to clear something up. There was-
Have you been drinking?
Yeah, so I say coffee. I'm drinking my tea, but so I'm going against your coffee with the candidates, but I do want to clear-
We're actually having, well, you're having, I already had my coffee this morning, and I actually got it from Hometown Cafe because I came here this morning to make sure it was okay to record here. So this is actually the first Coffee with a Candidate where actually anybody is drinking coffee. The only problem is we don't have a candidate. So now, before I was just talking with a candidate, now we're having Coffee with a Candidate without a candidate.
Well, and that's what I want to start off with. I want to clear up a rumor here that I, yes, I do work for candidates, but I guess some people are going around that I am working specifically for certain candidates in town.
I was gonna ask you that, and I, I forgot to mention, before we started recording, I was gonna tell you that I was gonna ask you about that, just because I was gonna get the lowdown on that one.
No, no, my days of working Loveland politics are long past. I'm not gonna work with anyone who's running for office, and if any of your listeners have heard, well, Ryan Kulik, isn't he managing X's campaign? That is actually not true.
No, and if you were, you'd have to disclose that, correct? You'd have to disclose that because of your profession, ethically, legally. If you're being paid, a candidate would have to show that you're being paid. And now, after the election's over, is your name gonna appear on any campaign finance reports?
No, absolutely not.
Because there is a post-general campaign report, and sometimes people like to play this game where they get paid after the pre-filing deadline, so your name is not gonna appear on any?
Right, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you upfront here, Joe, and this isn't really a, this isn't really an ad for me, but I tell this to people all the time. I don't play those games. It's, this is my job. This is what I do. If somebody hires me, I'm not going to say, pay me nothing now and pay me, I'm not a charity, okay? That's what I'm saying, but, so no-
I'm the charity here, right.
And then I do also want to quickly say, I help a lot with communications, and so podcasting, like you're talking about podcasting, I do also produce the High Heels and Politics podcast, which, if your listeners are interested, it's Mary Ann Christie, who is 86, 87 years old, and she's, she's done a couple of good ones. It's mostly people around the state of Ohio, but she's done, the one I want to highlight is Simon Lees, which a lot of people politically know-
I listened to that one.
Yes, was a giant, and-
Oh, yes.
It may not be for everyone, but it's, just to understand the influence of a man like that and what he had.
It's a good, if you're into politics in the region, okay, it's a good podcast in general. The one about Simon Lees, I have to say, is fascinating. Into Loveland, which is a great segue into what we're talking about today, the No Shows Podcast, the topic of this happened to be three of the, what are we up to now? I think six member, or six candidates for Loveland City Council. Dave Stanton dropped out. Was hoping to get a story on the site about that, but Dave Stanton called me, told me he was dropping out, and I think it was reported on social media by a user who maybe knew Dave or knew the circumstances. The reason Dave dropped out is he was given a very golden business opportunity that was going to require immense amounts of time, and that would mean that he probably was not gonna have the time he felt would be required to be a good city councilman. So he dropped out of the race on his own.
And he will, he is still on the ballot, but I do want people to know, look, everybody always talks about, I wish there was a none of the above choice. If you wanted to vote for Dave Stanton, that's your none of the above choice, but the truth of the matter is those votes, when they're certified, are thrown out there, so those votes will not count.
You know, and we talked about this the other day on the phone. They may count them. They're, I'm sure the machine will tabulate them. They just won't release those results.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping to get it, because part of it is, and as we talk about the three candidates that did not show up, a lot of what's happening is a referendum not on any of these candidates in particular. If it was my, if my viewpoint of this election is the school board is the big one, and I think it's great you got every single school board member, which are a person running for-
Yeah, they were great. I mean, and I'll say, if you're, if you're listening to this podcast, this would be episode 13. 13, 14, and 15 were supposed to be Neil Ori, Ted Phelps, the two incumbents, and the newcomer, John Hart, but Neil and Ted never responded to numerous requests for them to be on the podcast, and John Hart declined after, he told me he could not participate after I asked for his employee file from the Loveland local, or sorry, the Loveland City School District, where he is a vice principal and has been a teacher for several years. And I just, I explained this to him, you're the only employee, or sorry, the only candidate who's a public employee, and I asked for his employee file, just to see if there's anything there, because that's what reporters do, that's what journalists do. Well, he was highly offended by that, told me in no uncertain terms in Loveland City Hall, council chambers, and what I would admit was a heated conversation on both sides here. I found that a little bit appalling, that he thought that that was over the line. I would say I did get the employee file. There was nothing of note in it, and that's all I really wanted to see. If there was something of note in it, you would have read about it on Loveland Local News. There was nothing particularly fascinating about his employee file, but if there was something on there that might have been germane to him being on Loveland City Council, it would have been a story on Loveland Local News.
Well, let me start with John Hart. And even before I do that, Joe, I want to make something clear, okay? The last time I appeared on the ballot was, I think, my junior year of high school, when I ran for student council president. I did, I did not win, but-
Huh, we have this in common. I ran for student coun, I ran for vice president of my senior class and lost to somebody I didn't even know.
I, I lost to a much better candidate, I will say that. As a matter of fact, I think, I think I said something about her being in student government too long, and she was like moldy bread, and I feel bad for that, because she's a great human being, still friendly with her, but, but my, my point is, I learned when I was in college, I actually had a friend who wanted to run for the, the student body president in college, and so I said, hey, let me help manage your campaign. I was studying political science and everything. So I learned at that time, I rather run campaigns, work on campaigns. So before, I wanted to say that is, my name's never been on the ballot. I know putting your name on the ballot, it takes something. It, I tell this to every candidate, the day you go and devote, you're gonna look down, you're gonna see your name, and you're probably gonna get a little emotional. You're probably gonna feel like, wow, there's some real awesome power involved with this. So all these candidates I'm talking about, I commend them for putting their names on the ballot.
Absolutely, and I have said that actually in other podcasts. Some of them are getting beat up pretty bad. At least, maybe all of them are, I don't know. A few have mentioned it to me. Some have been beat up in kind of, in very unsavory ways. And folks, if you disagree with somebody, that is absolutely fine. That is what democracy is all about, and we have lots of choices in this election. There are six people running for Loveland City Council. There are four open seats. That's not a ton of choices, but there's choices.
It's still a choice.
And on the Loveland School Board, I believe, what are we, there's seven open, seven people running for three seats. So that's, that's a good choice, and then Kevin Doherty's running unopposed for the, you know-
For the remainder.
For the remainder of his two-year term that belonged to-
I believe that was Art Jarvis's.
I think I knew this at one point.
Yeah, yeah, I believe it was, I believe it was Art Jarvis's seat, or, yeah, because it was he and Dr. Lorenz that ran unopposed in 19.
Okay, that's good, you're better, because this has all become mashed potatoes in my head.
No, no, I, hey, I follow it well, and-
You do.
You know, people may know that, I mean, again, if you know me, you know I do the Eye on Loveland podcast, too, right? And so a lot of people may say, Joe, that, well, I'm against what the council's doing anyways, and these three candidates that we're talking about-
You're not for what they're doing.
No, I'm not, at all.
So there's no buns about it.
And I, look, if you guys want to know all of that stuff, you can go get it elsewhere. I want to talk about these candidates in particular.
Well, can I, I start off, let's say, let's, there's, there's some key issues that have come up in this election, and I think maybe a way to do this is, it's like, let's just say what the issues are really quickly, and then we can maybe talk about what these people are doing, and then we can throw in some, something unique to those candidates. So I would say the top issues right now would be parking and traffic in Loveland. And when you put parking, there's a pretty large subsect of that, which is, they proposed, maybe more than proposed at this point, parking garage, which is gonna go behind Loveland City Hall, behind the Works, and the lot that used to have two houses on it, the city now owns and controls. They want to put a parking garage there. Traffic in downtown Loveland has been an issue since the dawn of automobiles, I believe, in Loveland, so that is a definite issue, and it only seems to be getting worse as the city is growing and developing and becoming more popular, as a destination for restaurants, bars, the bike trail, et cetera. And another issue, I think, maybe more important than all of them, that is paramount to all of them, is important to me, and I have made an issue out of this only because it is important, I think, to every aspect of it, which is transparency and openness in Loveland city government and council specifically. Both of them, I would argue right now, are not very transparent.
No, no, and so we'll-
Any other issues I'm missing? I mean, oh, well, oh, my gosh.
The annexation.
The annexation of Grailville, which is, would be also maybe part of what the overall development, oh, gosh, how could I forget that? Development has been a huge issue. That's been a huge issue for as long as I've lived in Loveland, because we talk about farms being converted into subdivisions, and people don't like that generally. They like to, they moved to Loveland.
Well, and it's not only that. Like I said, I'm not gonna go through my personal beliefs on this, but there is, when it comes to annexation, and maybe start there, is the cities are depopulating. The pandemic showed, I mean, we are seeing that. We are seeing a new suburban flight that's happening. And so if you're looking at, like, a community like Loveland, it, these developers know that people want to come move out here. Where I think some of the issues have become, and this is where some of my personally are, but again, the election itself, is really looking like it's a referendum on what Mayor Kathy Bailey and her, her group is doing. And Mayor Bailey has very much, she's ruled that, them with kind of an iron fist. None of them speak. The only one that's really spoken up, I mean, you had Councilwoman Satell, but she's never part of their group her first two years, but these last two years, it's really been Tim Butler, Councilwoman Tim Butler. So with, you know, with Mr. Ori and with Mr. Phelps, and it needs, needs to be reminded that Ted Phelps is running for a third term.
Yeah.
Now, Ted Phelps has no website. He has no social media presence.
He does have his presence, he just hasn't updated it.
Oh, yeah, I think the last one was two years, right. He said at the council forum that he basically doesn't want to campaign. I mean, to, to use a word, and they're all Republicans, so they're not gonna like this show, but he's running the Joe Biden basement campaign, you know, what they're using. Ted Phelps feels like, and I, personally, as a voter, I actually think this is the worst of the campaigns that's being run right now, vote for me because I've been there. And even said at the candidates forum, oh, I like doing this. It's not about what you like doing, it's about you representing the citizens. And for the last four years, Ted Phelps has actually, he hasn't accomplished anything. He's never spoken up in council, he's never said anything, he's there to cover Mayor Bailey's agenda. Neil Ori, I mean, Neil Ori flat out admitted again in the candidates forum that he's learning on the job.
Yeah, that was a little bizarre to me.
I mean, but again, he's another guy who's just a rubber stamp.
You know, and he, I'll tell you, as a reporter, what do I say about Neil? Two years ago, I caught, and I say caught, because I don't think that they were planning to see me. I was, received a tip one night after a council meeting. Can't remember who gave me the tip, might even have been you, I don't know. Heard that they would meet at the Works Restaurant, next to the railroad car behind City Hall, and they'd have a meeting of their, with a quorum of council, among other people, including members of the Loveland Community Heartbeat Pack, who now dot, maybe not dot is not there, or maybe fill extensively committees.
Oh, yeah, and they're on multiple committees.
Multiple committees within City Hall. It's the mayor's right to do that. I'm just saying, that's what this, that's what the fact is. I was in a bit disbelief, because as a reporter, you just kind of assume that no one would do this, at least not in open, in the open. They would, might do this at somebody's kitchen table, and hope they don't see, you know, somebody talks about it, or a reporter walks by and looks in the picture window and sees everybody sitting around the dining room table or whatever. So I was in a bit disbelief, so I politely paid my bill and walked up, looked in the window of the Works, and I was stunned to see six members of the city council. One person who was going to be a member of the city council, that would be Andrew Bateman. The people there included Mayor Kathy Bailey, Vice Mayor Rob Weisgerber, before he came, and I love this moniker because I think it fits, and I just appalled at this, the virtual Vice Mayor, he hasn't been to a meeting except for a handful in two years because he has health issues. And they passed a special law in Loveland the past two years to allow him to continue doing this after COVID, after the COVID rules that the Ohio General Assembly created expired. So he, now the Loveland City Council members don't even have to be there. Now, he's the only one, oh, no, sorry, Tim Butler took advantage of this when he was out on the West Coast as well, but it was created because of Rob Weisgerber's need to be at home. Instead of resigning from city council, you have a council member who sits in his house, not accessible to the public. I guess you can call him, send him an email. I sent him an email. He doesn't answer my phone calls. He does sometimes respond to my emails in snarky ways, but I do hear from him, so you can't, I can't say he doesn't respond to me. He usually is giving me some kind of flip answer or something like that, but he will never go into depth. Nobody on city council, until maybe in the past year and a half, two years, Tim Butler would go into depth with me on anything. And I didn't try, I didn't try for a long time, honestly, with some of them, because they would just ignore me, or, you know, get nasty with me, or whatever. So that night, I walked in, I, like, they ran, they scattered. I mean, it was, it was like, it was amazing. City Solicitor Joe Braun was there, Todd Osborne, who's a former council member who is on several committees, he is the treasurer of the Loveland Community Heartbeat Pack, I believe Patty, Pat Naze, who was a former city council member, I believe she was there that evening, she wasn't there that time, she's been there other times, and then everybody but Tim Butler was at that, at that, that meeting that night. So they ran, Mayor Bailey was in the bathroom, I guess, for like 10 or 15 minutes, and then Joe Braun tripped over a chair trying to leave quickly, and then, and then Neil Ori.
To be fair, I, a lot of times if I eat pasta or pizza or stuff like that, it upsets my stomach, and I might be in the bathroom for about 10 minutes or so.
I may have upset their stomach that night. I believe that I did. I believe that people there were, the bar did well that night, let me just say. Oh, Neil Ori, I was gonna say, but we brought up Neil Ori. He repeatedly walked by me that evening and whispered an expletive, calling me a name, I think seven or eight times, while I sat down with a conversation, had a conversation with Rob Weisgerber, who was kind enough to do that, and asked me, why didn't I just come in and ask to take their picture? I think I said that I took their picture through the window, so I was, I couldn't believe it. And I said, do you think, really, Rob, you think you were gonna pose for this? And he told me that everybody's welcome to them. He said, I said, well, Angie Satell was never invited to these, was she? And she goes, oh, of course she was. I'm like, oh, so I called her, and she says, no, I wasn't. Of course I was not.
Now, this is, this is a good point, though, about, and again, John Hart and Kip Ping are a little bit different, because they're not incumbents, but this is what's gone on in Loveland the last few years.
Yeah, this is indicative of the whole thing.
Yeah, four years ago, the, this, this heartbeat pack, and you have the minority at the time, which was Ted Phelps, Kathy Bailey, and Rob Weisgerber, made it out that the council was, you know, doing development without any oversight from the community, made it out that they weren't being transparent, that everything was being done in secret.
Very much what the issue was.
Yes, and the fact is, if you look at it, that's exactly what's going on now. You go to a council meeting, the, what you hear is somebody will say something that's not Tim Butler. Ted Phelps will say something to cover Mayor Bailey, and then you'll hear Andy Bateman say, I agree with Councilman Phelps, and then you hear Kent Blair say, I agree. That's the only thing they say.
Yeah.
And then the moment Tim Butler comes in, I mean, they, they planned, they coordinated, Joe, to shut his voice down in a council meeting. He was-
We don't know that for sure, but I would say-
Councilman Kent Blair was reading something.
Well, okay, and that's what I was gonna say.
I was in the chambers, and I saw it.
Right, well, no, you saw, so it obviously, if it walks like a duck-
Yes.
Uh, it's quacks like a duck. It's probably a duck, but no one said, we are coordinating this. So I, but I would agree with you that from all outward appearances, yes, I'm being the journalist here and saying, by all outward appearances, it looked like they were doing it. We don't, they didn't say we coordinated, but yes.
So, but the point is, this is what they do, and even to the day we record this, there's some issues going on with the Loveland City Council on citizens that want to speak, and even to the point, Mayor Bailey made up a rule, just made up a rule, when, when citizen Dave Stanton, who was still a candidate at the time, to shut down his free speech. And do you hear anything from Andy Bateman, Kent Blair, Neil Ori, and Ted Phelps that are running for reelection?
Yeah, Andy Bateman will talk to me. He's not, you know, up for reelection right now. He will talk to me, but he likes to be off the record, and, and he has told me that he doesn't want to give me a quote until he, quote, talks to the team first.
That's, I mean-
And so that, I mean, I don't know who his team is, but-
Yeah, the team is, is the people of Loveland.
I asked him who the team was, he wouldn't tell me who the team was, so.
So anyways, it's really, that's been kind of a big thing, when you talk about transparency, free speech. It is obvious, if you go to a council meeting and you see it. I hear it all the time from people in the community, and what happens is they use their political action committee, and let's get this clear, Joe, this isn't a little community group. This isn't the Kiwanis, okay? This, this is, this isn't the Girl Scouts. This is a political action committee. They are there to get a political agenda pushed forward. And so anything they say about being, you know, we're just, and as a matter of fact, a lot of their spokespeople don't even live in Loveland, but the point is, they, they-
How many do you know? So, and I gotta say, the pack is, and I've said this on, on, I just calling out, I hate when people aren't transparent. I mean, it's just, it's the journalist thing that just bugs me to no end. They're on Facebook talking about council, city council issues, like they are like the wise sort of sage citizens.
No, they're not. They have an agenda.
They have an agenda. So that's fine. They have an agenda. You might have an agenda.
Absolutely.
Right, so let's just say who you are. So, hey, Todd Osborne, you are the treasurer. Hey, Shannon Gentry, you are the president of the Loveland Community Heartbeat Pack. Shannon Gentry is a former Democratic precinct executive here. Todd Osborne votes Republican. He's not a Trump guy. I know he's, you know, he's a never Trumper guy, I guess is what they, they're being called. Doesn't really matter in Loveland politics, but he is the treasurer. So the, the majority of their members, you can get, you can find out who people's political affiliations are in Ohio as a public record. It is not hard to do it. And now, some group has put them all online, so you don't even need to ask the Board of Elections anymore. The majority of the people of the Loveland Community Heartbeat Pack are left-leaning Democrats.
Yeah, I mean, I've, yes, they are. I, I'm very, very involved in politics.
They are not all Democrats. They are not all. And I, I, I just said they are left-leaning, okay? They are definitely a left-leaning group. And how do we know this? Because we looked at the public file. We also know, that, that, I was just full stop right there. We also know that this group was founded out of a group called the Friends of the Loveland Farmers Market.
Right.
The Loveland Farmers Market has been pushed around. I think that's safe to say. They used to be where Loveland Station was. They got moved, they were in the Jackson Street Market area, which is owned by the Loveland Sims Fire Department, and then they were pushed out to Loveland Madera Road because Loveland Council was getting complaints about traffic. But so on Tuesday evenings, when there were council meetings and the Farmers Market, so they put them out in Loveland Madera Road, where the oasis is now, which used to be the bowling alley, and they didn't like that. And they did what they're allowed to do. They formed a group, and then they changed their name to the Loveland Community Heartbeat Pack. Now, I think what happened was, there was a group there that also sort of globbed on together with some people that hated former Mark, Mayor Mark Fitzgerald, and we don't want to rehash that whole situation, but he's the former city manager, and city managers, you know, if they do their job well, make friends and enemies, because they make decisions that affect people, and sometimes it goes the way of some people and goes against the other way of other people, and so he had some haters. Let's just say, there were some haters, and they kind of globbed together and formed, changed their name from the Friends of the Loveland Farmers Market to the Loveland Community Heartbeat Pack, when they formed their committee. And it's Loveland citizens, it's non-residents, people who live outside of the city limits of Loveland, Miami Township. It's all legal. There's nothing illegal. You can live anywhere, be part of the pack anywhere if you want.
I'm just trying to make this out that, you know, everybody's not this innocent actor. Yeah, I get it, I get it.
Just where people are coming from.
And these, and the reason they're brought up is because of the candidates that don't show up here on your show, that's who backs them. That's, that's their voice. So when you hear, you're not gonna hear from Ted.
Come on, they are, they are endorsing Kip Ping, and he did come on the podcast. He, he had lots of questions before he came on, which is fine. I answered them. He showed up. We recorded an interview. It's out there. Take a listen.
Yeah, I think it's great. But when it comes to Councilman Ori and Councilman Phelps asking for reelection, they're using this group, they're using the division that they caused in the community, in order to try to continue to have a city council that has no discussion. So, but let's talk about John Hart.
Yes, there's a narrative out there about John Hart.
Right, I know about the incident with you and him in city council chambers yelling. There's been-
It was heated, yelling. I don't know if there was yelling. It was heated. I don't think anybody yelled, but maybe I did.
Supposedly, there was, supposedly there was another event. He was at a citizen event where he got heated again.
Yes, I talked to somebody who was at that event, one person, and who said, it got, that there were people that, so basically what they told me was an HOA meeting of some people up on one of the HOAs along 48 going up into Warren County from Loveland, and the way it was explained to me was, they met early to kind of go over and inform residents about some of the issues that were happening. The night after that, they had the, the community forum there. They said that everybody attended except for Kip Ping, and-
And I believe Neil Ori did not.
Neil Ori did not attend, I believe is, right, they said, and, and they said that they had prior family commitments and couldn't make it. So Ted Phelps was there, John Hart was there, Tim Butler was there, and Ken Lukens was there. Am I missing anybody there? No, I think that's everybody there.
Yeah.
And they described, they, they were pushing the issue, their main issue is about development along 48. They already, traffic backed up badly where the Marathon Station is, which is under, the city's right now trying to buy that to put it internally, to try to alleviate some of the traffic issues there. But they're upset about more development, which means more cars and means bigger backups to get over the bridge in Loveland to get pretty much anywhere else in the region. And the way it was described to me is that, well, first I was told it was, he exploded, which she said, I wouldn't call exploded. I would say he got testy, and she saw a side of John Hart that she'd never seen before. I haven't reached out yet to John, talked to him about that. I don't know that he'll talk to me.
Well, that's part of the issue, though, Joe. He's in a, he is running for election.
Yeah.
You are part of the press in this town. I am in a very, very vocal citizen in this town, and he ignores, and this is, this is part of the issue, because if John Hart is truly a new candidate and truly wants to represent all of Loveland, he needs to really understand what that is. And what that is, is not coming in and having a preset set of beliefs. Somebody asked him about that Blossom Hill development, and he said, oh, I would have totally supported it. And then he turns around and says he doesn't fully understand it anyways. Here's the problem. The public does not support it. The people that live there do not support it. So John Hart has basically told you that he is gonna do whatever Mayor Bailey says and doesn't care what the public says, but at the same time, he says we should listen. So in the case of John Hart, look, we know who Neil Ori is, we know who Ted Phelps is. In the case of John Hart, he is running to basically say that I will continue to ignore you.
Yeah, and he seems like he is, you know, he, he's on some committees, he's on the Master Plan Committee, he's on the, I think he's the chair of that. I think he's on the, maybe also the chair of the Rec Board as well, Recreation Committee.
Yeah, I believe so.
You know, he, he's a, but he seems to kind of be following along with a point of view. There's not a lot of open-mindedness going on there. And I think this analysis that we're providing here, you know, it's open, he can disagree with it. He, he didn't come on the podcast, so I can't.
No, hey, I go to these meetings, he has every right to come and talk to me, but if, if, at the end, when it comes to somebody like John Hart, so the issue here in Loveland, and I, Joe, I haven't been here for 38 years or 42 years, or Neil Ori at the candidates forum said-
You're not qualified to talk about this.
Exactly. Neil Ori says he's, he's qualified because he's lived here 64 years or whatever. I mean, this is bunk, okay?
That's not a qualification for office. Longevity in a particular area is not a-
So anyways, the, the fact that this is what they use, they use this idea of, I've been in Loveland this long, I've been Loveland this long. Look, I've only been here since 2013, but-
I came in 2014, November 1st, 2014.
That puts me through quite a few election cycles here, and being somebody that has been, that I've done this for a quarter of a century now, okay? I know, I know I sound like a spring chicken, people, but I've done this a long time.
You look like you're 14. No, I'm just kidding.
A bald 14-year-old. A bald chubby 14-year-old, yeah. So it's a, the, the point is, though, it's all these blocks, and that's what's been going on in Loveland. And everybody gets mad about Washington DC and it's partisan and gridlock and whatever, all this other stuff. But here in Loveland alone, the election cycle has been two different groups just vying for control. Well, you know what? This election's different. This election's finally different. There is no, who used to be the Rob Weisgerber people and who used to be the Mark Fitzgerald people. Mark Fitzgerald's not on council anymore, and Rob Weisgerber, this is it.
Yeah, he, he's not running for reelection for maybe health reasons or whatever. We don't know. He won't say.
The fact is, when we look at this election, and you can sit here, and this even goes with the school board, too. You have three candidates that say, vote for all of us, and then on the city council, you have four candidates say, vote for all of us. This is Loveland's chance to say no. This is Loveland's chance to finally be like, guys, I mean, Councilman Butler, and I do not- This is Loveland's chance to finally be like, guys, I mean, Councilman Butler, and I do not agree with Councilman Butler on everything. And he and I have had discussions about that. But you know what? I appreciate, I appreciate the fact that he's at least talking.
Yeah.
I mean, my views of development.
I really appreciate it as a journalist because for a long time I'd get no responses or I'd get terse responses. And even David Kennedy, who, you know, is a nice enough guy. I mean, he's the city manager of Loveland, if you don't know that. He does usually respond to me, but they're usually just short answers and he tries to deflect and get me off the phone and it drives me bonkers frankly, but.
You know, and here's the other thing.
Tom Smith, the assistant city manager, has told me that he's not authorized to speak to me.
Yeah, it is ridiculous. This is, we're not living in Soviet Russia here, okay? We're not living in an area where we need to control the media in this town.
Do you know who in the city of Cincinnati where I used to cover city hall, and that's been a few years, do you know who's allowed to talk to me?
I, I would say everybody.
Everybody is allowed to talk to me in the city of Cincinnati.
And I do, I do a lot of lobbying and there are some.
They recommend that they go through the PR person.
Yes.
But they don't, as far as I know, they don't get in trouble if they speak to the media without talking to me. And, and the police department's a little different, or even the fire department, because sometimes it involves crimes they're investigating and they have to be careful what they say. But just an assistant city manager down at city hall, or the transportation director, or the city architect, or the finance director, they talk to me all day long.
I, I have clients that I have to lobby for. I have to get government approvals and I have to influence the government. And in my life, in my career, and being that this is my own backyard, and I do believe this happened with the Loveland School Board recently too. The fact that everything is so secretive that only a handful of people get to decide what is going on in the city. And the fact that there's no, the, the moment somebody pushes back that they are met with hostility. That's what it comes down to at the end of the day. And we know Neil Ori and Ted Phelps will always treat that with hostility. It is, you are either with us or you're against us. That is their philosophy. Kip Ping came on your show. He pled his case and he deserves kudos for it. But John Hart is not doing that. And John Hart is walking around telling people, I believe listening's important, and then he's not listening.
So John Hart first told me, I asked him to come on the podcast before I sent an email. I told him, hey, there's gonna be a podcast out here. And his response was, um, and this, I, I, when he first filed for election or he first picked up petitions, I called him. He did an interview with me. Uh, and then immediately he shut down. Cause he probably called somebody and said, hey, I just talked to this guy. And they went, oh God, why'd you talk to him? Oh jeez, what is he gonna do with that? Well, guess what I've done with it? Nothing unethical. I've done nothing almost with John Hart. So, um, but that was, the next time I talked to him, I said, hey, John, I'm doing this podcast. I'm gonna invite you on. I just wanted to give you a heads up. And he goes, oh, I'll have to see. And he goes, oh, I might be busy with family and stuff. And I said, are you gonna campaign? And he was like, well, yeah. And I said, well, then this ought to be part of your campaign. No one else said that to me.
No.
Okay. And I don't know what Neil Ori and Ted Phelps were thinking because they didn't even respond to me. That's what he said. Kip Ping came on and every person is running for the Loveland, um, city school district school board, including Kevin Doherty, who's running out of post.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I, I don't know else to say. The other thing he told me, I talked to his wife. His wife is Randy Rico. She is a Channel 5 meteorologist, longtime morning meteorologist here. And, um, I, uh, said to her, kind of like media person to media person. Are you concerned, uh, you know, about, were, were the people at the station concerned about him, um, you know, your husband running for, for office? And she said, no, because it's nonpartisan. And then, um, he received a Republican endorsement.
Yeah, which he did not even attend the meeting.
He didn't attend the meeting. Didn't seek it, but received it. And as far as I know, isn't shying away from it. He's not denounced that.
No, and I'm glad you brought that up because I do want to say something about that.
That is really bothersome. From a journalism standpoint, it's very troublesome.
Yeah, he's gonna tell you, and this is what you're gonna hear. So again, the day we record this, the pre-election campaign reports have come out.
Yeah.
And I've gone through every single one of them.
I have not done that yet. So you're ahead of me.
Yeah. And so they talked about, uh, the, going back to Loveland Heartbeat PAC.
It's a lot of work to edit 13 podcasts, okay?
I get it, I get it.
I know you do.
But, um, the, and look, I, I watch C-SPAN to relax, so this is just in my blood, but, uh.
You know, it's funny. I do something very similar, okay?
So the, uh, the finance reports though, and you hear this from the Heartbeat PAC because like you said, there's a lot of Democrats in their group. And they are endorsing the four endorsed Republicans. And let's be honest, the, the parties are pretty, I mean, the, we could do a whole nother podcast about just the, the fraud that is the Hamilton County GOP. But anyways.
Wow.
It's true. I mean, all the things they say and then they turn around. I mean, Kathy Bailey appointed a Democrat.
Well, that's true.
And they think she's some kind of hero or whatever.
And they didn't say he was a Democrat at the time. But now they're very proud of this. It's, it's very strange. It was, now you have to say that's Ken Blair.
So they're Democrats and one of their members, as a matter of fact, said, I would not vote for them if they passed out partisan material. Well, Kip Ping and Ted Phelps, it says endorsed by the Republican Party directly on their thing. But I want to go back.
Yeah, I know. They said that, the PAC members, that we wouldn't support them. We, they, he said that they said, or this person said on social media that we told, we made them commit to this when they ended the endorsement process. Well, they were already doing it.
Yeah, exactly. So any of that, I just want the listeners to know that that's what's happening. But here's the other part of it. Here's the other issue with it. Is if you get the endorsement, you actually get financial help. And what, what John Hart is gonna tell you is I did not take that financial help. I believe Kip Ping has taken it.
Oh, did he not take it? Did John Hart not take it?
No. Uh, Neil Ori did not take it. Or, I mean, Neil Ori did take it. Kip Ping did take it. Uh, Ted Phelps doesn't have a report because I don't think he spent any money.
Uh huh.
And so you have John Hart, it's not on his, his pre-election report. I'm pretty, pretty sure about that. And so they're gonna say, but you see, John Hart did not accept it. On election day, there are gonna be people sitting outside of the polls handing you something called the pink ticket.
It's already out. It came out this morning.
I did it? Okay.
Oh yeah. And I think, I believe his name's on it.
Yeah.
I, I'll double check while we're talking here. Go ahead.
But so regardless of what he says or anybody associating with him, he is using that endorsement because Loveland is majority Republican. And so they're gonna try to use that endorsement in order to propel them to victory. But I, I'm gonna go back to what I said near the beginning is, a lot of this may be a referendum on the leadership of Mayor Bailey. And of what's going on and the fact that they are adding more and more development. They're taking light residential and making it heavier development in order to pack more houses in, which means more cars, which means more people. And at the same time, when the Councilman Butler brings up, hey, how are we gonna solve these problems? What does a Ted Phelps say? I have no opinion and I'm gonna agree with whatever the mayor says. What's Neil Ori say? I have no opinion. I'm gonna agree with what the mayor says. And now you're hearing that from John Hart. So when you look at these three candidates, Joe, it's not that you need to sit down and speak to them each for 30 minutes because they're all gonna say the same thing. We're gonna do whatever we are told to do and we're not gonna listen to the voters. And the fact is, if those, two of those four men at least are gonna win, maybe all four of them are gonna win. If, and so regardless of what happens, they can't blame everything on everyone else. Rob Weiskirber and his people blamed Mark Fitzgerald for Loveland Station. That was not true. Ted Phelps, he voted for Loveland Station. And I'm not criticizing Mr. Phelps for that. But these, the people in the Heartbeat PAC, the people that support them, that was their number one thing. Even, even a candidate, candidate Tim Butler four years ago ran very heavy against the current council against the Loveland Heartbeat PAC. Is it in there?
John Hart is in the Loveland City Council. He's on the, uh, he's on the Republican.
Yes. So he is, so he is getting support from a partisan piece of literature that will be handed out to voters.
That's right.
That, those are the facts.
Right.
So at the end of the day.
So you're kind of trying to have it both ways.
He, that's exactly what he's doing.
Yeah.
But you know what? If he wins and he decides he's gonna stay on the organizing meeting, that he's gonna listen to people, he's gonna do this. Yeah, I'm gonna tell the Mr. Hart and I'll tell you right now, Mr. Phelps and Mr. Ori already know that. I'm gonna be sitting in the back of that room with my big bald head, my big blue glasses, and I'm watching every single thing you do. And when you are not gonna support the voters, it's not gonna be a very happy second and fourth Tuesday of every month. Because you know what, Joe? People like you, people like me, we keep these people accountable and that's what the voters need.
And they don't appear to like it very much. So, uh, where does John Hart, where does, so, so John Hart, we know Neil Ori and Ted Phelps appear to be, um, supporting the parking garage. We don't, I mean, they make votes. There's a very little discussion, which is kind of why these meetings, you know, made a big deal about these meetings. Um, they shouldn't happen, even if there was a lot of robust discussion at, at city hall. There's been more discussion lately. Um, I, I dare I say like faux discussion because I don't. Um, I think they are, uh, having discussions now because they've been called out by me.
Yes.
Maybe to you, you by some extent as well too, on your podcast for not being, um, not having discussions and meetings. But for a long time, they'd come in and have a vote and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, sometimes more. More, maybe at least, let's say, I'll go with hundreds of thousands of dollars. And there would be little to no discussion. There'd be an emergency vote. They would vote on this, which means, emergency vote means, it doesn't necessarily mean it's like a lights and sire and emergency. It means we need to vote on this now without having two readings of an ordinance. Normally you read an ordinance and then it goes out there. Then the citizens know, oh, the council is going to do this. And then they have two weeks to go to the next meeting and say, hey, we really oppose, you're gonna, you know, uh, you know, paint all the streets red like in, in England for the Queen or whatever. Uh, and so, um, they can do that. But then you can pass a more emergency ordinance to make things happen faster. So literally they vote on them. They go into effect right away.
Yeah.
Or does it have to wait 30 days? So I think they actually, I don't know. It's either 30 days or right away. But it basically, it skips the second reading uh, of the, of the legislation. So it basically gives the public zero opportunity to, uh, provide input on this. And it's needed. Sometimes, you know, real estate deals, stuff like that, I get it. Uh, but there's no discussion about that this is even an opportunity that they're going to, um, partake in. So.
I, I work with a lot of different governments and I can tell you a lot of times, especially with major capital improvement projects, what has happened. And this is 99%, 90% of the time, let's say, because let's say I work with 10 different governments and one is Loveland. The parking garage in particular came out of nowhere.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it did.
And it was a situation where it would have been really simple is if they.
So what does John Hart say about the parking garage?
I, you know what? I mean, I'm sad that I have to speak for him, but I know people that have talked to him that have said, oh, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. He told me that.
Again, this is a thing that has no studies, but a lot of times how this happens, and having been involved with parking garages. What has happened is the council will get together, the city manager or somebody will say, look, I have this idea for parking garage. This is what we need to do to do it. And so what happens is the next council meeting, they say, uh, we're gonna have a special meeting in a week or so or whatever, where we're gonna, cause the special meetings usually only, they don't have public comment. They only usually have one topic, but you can make it like a community charrette and say, this is, have the city manager present. We have a parking issue and this is a solution. And then you start doing your lane purchase.
There's been no, this is a thing, another issue with me. There's been no study done about parking. The only thing that came close to this, um, was something that was done by the company who actually is going to, um, is being paid to create the facade on the, basically the, the, the outer covering of the concrete of this parking garage.
Yeah.
They basically did a study that said, oh, you need a parking garage.
Yeah.
You know, because if they don't need a parking garage, then this company doesn't make any money. Not saying that they're that unscrupulous, but certainly they have, they have a dog in the fight, right?
Capitalism.
That's capital. They have a dog in the fight. You know, it's like, you know, I can write a report that says anything, right? You know, so. Um, and they, they used some data. They said, oh, it's not real data because it was COVID and everything else. So that's the other thing. The only other thing, um, too, is sort of these anecdotal, like we don't, there's no parking. You come down on a Friday night in July on a beautiful, cool evening, let's say October, cool evening, like we're in October right now. I bet you there's gonna be, it's gonna be harder to park. Um, but the issue, you know, becomes, you know, do we need, how often do we need a parking garage? You wanna pay for a seven to $10 million parking garage, um, when it's only needed, you know, 30 days a year or something like that. So, um, those are all fine discussions to have and city councils can build a parking garage for things that are only used 30 days a year.
You're saying though, those are good discussions to have. We're not having them.
Right. We're not having those discussions. And that is my point.
And I feel like we know that you're not gonna have them with Ted Phelps. You know, you're not gonna have them with Neil Ori. And now John Hart being, you know, Johnny Giddlon and saying, you know, I like what they're doing and not listening to the voters. Again, I want to make this really clear.
Yeah.
He went to a meeting with people who, there was over 300 people who signed that petition to not change. And again, guys, this wasn't the developer coming in and using the piece of land how they wanted. The city had to change the zoning. Had to change it from light to medium. And they did. And to be fair, because everybody's gonna say, Tim Butler's the only one that voted against it. Virtual mayor, Rob Weiskirber also voted against it.
That's right.
But you know who voted for it? Neil Ori and Ted Phelps.
Yeah.
And with no discussion, with no care towards the people who had rallied around it. And then John Hart says, I'm gonna listen to the people and then quote unquote gets testy.
Are we talking about Blossom Hill here?
Yes, yeah.
So, so Dave Stanton, who was a former candidate, shared an email with me, which I never got around to reporting, from Kathy Bailey, the mayor of Loveland, who said basically, hey man, tough luck. We want more residents because it's better for the bottom line of the city of Loveland, which means more tax money.
Yeah.
So hey, sorry, you don't want to have, uh, you know, high density or higher density housing right by your neighborhood. When it wasn't zoned that way when you moved in, we want more residents because that'll mean more property taxes and maybe some, possibly some income taxes. So tough luck. And there is an email, he, I couldn't believe that. And that was another, I can't believe it Loveland moment, which there are a lot of those folks.
Yes.
Uh, and that was another one that I got. And I'm like, you need to send that to me. He sent it to me. Wow, there it is in black and white.
Mm-hmm. No, and it's, hey, look, I've said this before, but Mayor Bailey doesn't know what she's doing. And Dave Kennedy is getting close to retirement. And what they're doing is they're just trying to shove as much. And hey, the developers, they know people want to move out of the city. So they're trying to create a city-like atmosphere for them.
Yep.
And if that's what you want in Loveland, I mean, they all like to sit up there. I think again, John Hart talked about our community being quaint. I don't know where the hell he's been the last few years because that's not what downtown is. And if you're, if you believe that, you are either, or if you're saying that, you are either trying to confuse the voters and not telling them the truth, or you really have no idea what's going on. Because they may all not like Loveland Station, but they're building that over off 48.
Yep.
And then they're gonna build another high-density development, not high-density, they're gonna build a development with a lot of homes.
Yeah.
Just up over where Grailville is. And again, the public is being left out of these discussions. So when you go vote, that, you know, this is the last thing I want to say about voting. This, you go vote.
I want to talk about Grail. We're going way over here, but I really want to talk about the Grail issue. Because I think this is, like, as we're recording this here on Tuesday, October 26th, the Grail issue is lighting up social media big time.
Well, let me talk about this voting. So.
Go ahead. Yes.
You will go in and for school board and for the city council. So the school board, you're gonna have three votes. And the city council, you're gonna have four votes. And I know it's frustrating to some people. I think the city council or the schools a little bit easier. There are three names running together. People are gonna feel good about that. The people that don't feel good about that, they're gonna find another three names. But when it comes to city council, it is definitely those four men. Kip Ping, John Hart, Neil Ori and Ted Phelps.
Yep.
And then there's Tim Butler and there's Kim Lukens. Now, from my understanding, Tim Butler and Kim Lukens are not running together. But there are people.
They've told me that.
Yes, there are people that like Tim Butler.
They actually know each other and chose not to run together. They, they go to the same church.
Right. Tim, Tim Butler.
And they also told me that they chose to run, I mean, Tim was on council. He had no idea Kim Lukens was gonna run. And she told me, I didn't tell Tim I was gonna run.
Yeah, no, no, no.
So they told me that. Now, take it for whatever you want. But that's what they told me.
But I have a lot of people who've come up to me who says, you know, I like Tim Butler or I like Kim Lukens, or I do not like those four men. Who should I vote for? And I tell them all the same thing. Vote for only who you want. You do not need to fill all four of those votes. Because if you do, if you do that, and you really like a Tim Butler, you really like a Kim Lukens, and then you just throw your vote to Neil Ori and Kip Ping, well, you're helping Neil Ori and Kip Ping. They already have the Heartbeat PAC and they're supporters that are gonna vote for them. So if you really, the best message you can send to people is by putting a Tim Butler and a Kim Lukens in there because look, those are two independent voices. Trust me, listen to your podcast alone, Joe. You know, Kim Lukens and Tim Butler are nothing alike.
No, they're not.
Those are two independent voices.
Yeah.
It is going to cause discussion to come back to the Loveland City Council. And then maybe an Andy Bateman needs to realize it's time to start, the team is the people of Loveland. And maybe he will start letting that discussion flourish.
That is, that is a, uh, checking with the team is one of the most amazing things I think I ever heard.
Yeah.
A politician or a elected member of any body, say, because if you're a team, you only need one, right?
Yes.
You can just let the mayor do everything.
Which is what they do.
And give Tuesday, give the second and fourth Tuesday off to the other six people because the team, it's okay if you vote the same, if you really agree.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing. Just when, I told this to a candidate early in the race. In a four-year term, you have maybe five or six important votes. Five or six really.
Right.
Most of the time you're voting to, you know, assess liens on property or to do some of these financial things or stuff like that. So this idea that the votes always have to be split is ridiculous.
Yep.
But when those five or six votes come up, even if it's 7-0, everybody should be explaining why. They should all be on the record of why they're voting the way they're voting.
That's what normally happens. I wouldn't say every vote, everybody explains why they're, but for definitely a contested or a controversial vote. Uh, my experience, just about everybody, if not everybody, always kind of explains their vote before they vote. So the public knows why they're there and you know why you support this person, whether you should vote for them the next time. I want to bring up too, and this is gonna sound like a list of grievances here, but, um, I, I think it's worth noting that, um, the, um, candidates forum. I saw something that I, really bothers me. Uh, the Loveland, um, Little Miami Chamber, Chamber Alliance, C.C. Collins. Um, she put together a candidate forum. They've, she's been doing it for years. She was very active in the 2017 campaign. Gave money to the Loveland Community Heartbeat PAC, um, may have supported some candidates. I'm not sure. But definitely gave money to the Heartbeat PAC back in 2017. I don't know if she has. I haven't looked at the financial reports. Rumor has it, and I've not talked to her directly, is that she wanted to stay out of the campaign actively.
Tim Butler is the only member of the city council that's actually a member of the Little Miami Chamber Alliance.
Well, I was a member too, and they, and they gave everything to Loveland Magazine. So I didn't.
Well, and I.
Any, any bones for stories or anything all went to Loveland Magazine, who's not a member as well.
I, I am not here to give Mr. Butler any advice, but if I saw her being involved with that, I would pick up the phone and be. I am not here to give Mr. Butler any advice, but if I saw her being involved with that, I would pick up the phone and be like, excuse me, but anyways.
Well, and so here, here's what my issues with the forum. They put out a, um, notice of the forum and they put the four candidates there. Um, Kip Ping, Neil Ori, Ted Phelps and John Hart on the pictures. And they said, not picture Tim Butler, Dave Stanton and Kim Lukens, I believe. I remember Tim Butler was.
He, I, I looked it up. He was, yeah.
His picture was on there.
But Kim Lukens and Dave Stanton.
And Dave Stanton were not. They both separately told me at different times, they were never even invited to the forum, much less given an opportunity to have their picture put on there. That is dishonest.
Yes.
That's all I want to say about that. But it's dishonest. The forum is whatever. The forum is fine. You know, they gave exclusive media rights to Loveland magazine. It's been viewed like a record 70 times or something like that. I, I don't know that it's super impactful or it's even super useful. That's not for me to decide. That's just what it is. But I wasn't invited. Dave Miller, uh, who is at Loveland magazine, uh, who had the rights to the, that forum, which is done in a public place, but they rented out, they're allowed to do that. He was going around telling media people there that night not to record it. He did that to me a couple of years ago, told me, you can't take pictures or record this. It's a media event, okay? For democracy.
Yes.
And that was what David Miller did. David Miller, again, is the left leaning, very clearly left leaning. He's not, makes no bones about it. It's not a surprise. But he has, uh, never been a journalist until he started Loveland magazine, which is the hometown newspaper, which is really a blog. But that is what he does. And, uh, Dave Miller, um, that, you know, won't let anybody else have the video, won't do any, you know, wouldn't let anybody else there to take pictures or videotape it, even for, even for play later. Even like the major league sports allow you to come there and videotape it and play it after the game's over. But he wouldn't do that. So that is the kind of silliness that we see here in Loveland politics. So anyway, well, thank you, Ryan, for being on Coffee with the Candidate. Thanks for drinking coffee.
Thanks for doing this. So.
Oh, you're welcome. No, I appreciate it. I, I, I think this is super important and I don't think there's a lot of information out there about, um, the, uh, the, either races, uh, and, and, and that's been a problem for a long time. If there's, there's stuff out there, but there isn't real information. So I appreciate you helping me do this analysis here. And that's what this is, analysis. So we are talking about kind of what we're seeing out there too. So, uh, be sure to check out LovelandLocalNews.com for all information about Loveland and the surrounding communities. Sign up for our email newsletter. A little thing will pop up if you go to the site. Uh, check out our Facebook feed, uh, on, uh, Loveland, on Facebook. Obviously it's on Facebook and then Instagram, uh, Pinterest, Snapchat. I think we're on, yeah, we're everywhere. I think we.
Are you on MySpace?
You know what? I'm going to go back. I think we can still put ourselves on MySpace. You know what? Check out.
Friendster, Flickr.
Friendster is gone. I've checked. Okay. But, uh, you know, but Flickr's still there and so is MySpace. So MySpace, I will go ahead and I think it's owned by Justin Timberlake.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll go ahead and create a, uh, a MySpace page, but don't hold your breath on that, folks. So thanks for listening, uh, to Coffee with the Candidate. Remember, early voting began October 5th. You can go out and early vote now at your local board of elections. Too late to register, folks. Sorry, that was October 4th, but election day is this coming Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021. Polls in Ohio are open from 6:30 AM until 7:30 PM. You can visit the Hamilton County Board of Education website, Google that.
Board of Elections.
What did I say?
Board of Education.
Oh, yeah. Turn, oh, Board of Elections. Woo. Wow, I'm losing it. Uh, Board of Elections website to find out where your local precinct is if you don't seem to know. Again, Joe Wessels, publisher of Loveland Local News with Ryan Kulik. Thanks for being a part of this again, Ryan.